Call to order the committee, the whole meeting of Monday, December 17th, 2018. Will Kirk call the roll, please?
Mayor Berman?
Here.
Trusty Gaffino?
Here.
Trusty Lowry?
Here.
Trusty Curtis?
Here.
Trusty Carroll?
Here.
Trusty Martinez?
Here.
Trusty Gailey?
Here.
Our first item in discussion is Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been working with the property owner of Lot Two in the Randall Commercial Center. There is a narrow photograph on the cover of the staff report. It's located north of the Shodin property and south of the Randall Storage Center. I'm on the, would be west of Randall Road. It is, in 2001, it was approved as part of a B-2 PUD, which allows for commercial uses. Again, I've been working with the property owner who submitted a concept plan to allow for residential on the property. And he'll go through his presentation and give you more specifics on the plan itself. But for the, for the sake of tonight, I'd like to get feedback from the village board, the first question being, would residential use be acceptable on Lot Two in the Randall Commercial Center? So with that being in mind, we can also provide the property owner with some feedback regarding his development plan, which I'll let him go through now. Mr. Sorrentino?
All right, Mr. Sorrentino.
Good evening. As Michael mentioned, the location is up on Randall Road in Kennesaw. It's called the Randall Road Commercial Center. It was originally developed as a three-lot subdivision. Showing two there, but actually a four-lot subdivision. Lot One was subdivided up into some retail commercial and consists currently of a small retail center and a guided daycare. Lot Three was developed due to a self-storage facility, about eighty-seven thousand square feet, which exists there today. Lot Two is the lot in question. It's a five-point-two-acre parcel. And then Lot Four was retention on. It's situated at the rear of the property and services the entire. Lot Three fronts directly on the Miller. To the north is the self-storage facility. To the south is vacant. Shodin property. To the east, directly to the east of Christopher Miller, is guided daycare and then that five-acre parcel subdivided. And to the west sits the, about a four-acre retention on that measure of about three-hundred-and-ten feet deep and about six-hundred-and-forty-three feet wide, the whole length of the property. All utilities are at the site, including the storm. Current zoning is commercial. It allows for multiple uses of sunlight, industrial, historic hotel, office, et cetera. We're thinking about doing some residential work there. We did a market study, which we concluded a couple of months ago, which drove us to developing a site plan to encompass sixty-six rental units, apartments, consisting of three, three-story buildings, eighteen units each, and one three-story building that contains twelve units each. Total sixty-six units, accommodating one-hundred-and-thirty-seven parking stalls, thirty of them could be garage. We would include a pool, clubhouse, office, etc. in there, social area. Based on our market study, we developed a unit mix that would consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units, ranging in size from about eight-hundred-and-thirty square feet to all fourteen-hundred square feet. We believe that we can be competitively priced in the marketplace. All the buildings would be Alvera buildings. One of the concepts in particular that drove this site plan was, you often see, I lived in one as a kid, apartment buildings where all the balconies, not all, most of the balconies are patios, seem to face parking lots, streets, highways, et cetera. And so we made an effort to develop these buildings where all the patios and balconies would face a central courtyard area in the middle of the property. The extra space provided by the detention, off-site detention, we don't need to have a big retention point on site, allows us, provides us the ability to do a nice landscaping plaza, that kind of area in there that would be considered a social gathering area, et cetera. The look that we would try to accomplish through some of our building elevations would be somewhat of a, a little bit of a contemporary, but with a country flair. We still want to make, we're going to maintain a couple of porches on either side of the maintenance way of each building where people could gather on the first floor, things of that nature. We believe at this time we would do a, probably a gated community. And our unit mix was such, so I think that's a basic brief analysis of what we'd like to do there. Like I said, it is zoned commercial under a PUD agreement that we did quite some time ago, and we'd like to modify that agreement to accommodate residential use.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you did a market study, and in your study it said that the apartments would be appropriate?
Yeah, they said yes. They said they would be appropriate. We got into unit mix, unit sizes, lease-up capability, you know, rates, all that kind of stuff in the market study. Yes.
Okay, so the, I got, let me just pull up the rents. Okay. So the rents would range from, is it sixteen, sixteen hundred, is that correct, sixteen hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, yeah, you should have a sheet there.
Yeah, you just put it up.
I don't have in front of me, but yes.
Okay.
Do you have any?
And those are, keep in mind that if we're successful, by the time we do architectural drawings and engineering work-
Sixty-six.
And actually broke ground, we'd like to be breaking ground next year. So you're, 2019, you probably got a twelve-month build-out. So you're, those are, we kind of projected to 2020 rental rates.
Okay. This would have to come back for zoning. It'd have to go through a PUD amendment process, so it'd go for the full public hearing, albeit the plan commission, and then probably back to the village board for a committee discussion and final board approval if the board feels this is appropriate.
I have a question about the comprehensive plan as it pertains to this parcel. What was the recommendation with the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan, it's, it just denotes the property as regional commercial for the entire area. There really was not a specific parcel designation in this case, but the development itself, which is, which is pretty prevalent going up to Randall Crossing, is all regional commercial.
Have we had any commercial interest in the parcel at all recently?
This parcel, no.
Unfortunately.
How long have you been sitting on this land?
When did we do the annex, the original annexation?
I think it was 2001.
Yeah, and I probably owned it five years before that, before we ever did anything. So it's been a while.
Would there be any, Mike or Steve, do you know if there would be any, or what would be the difference in terms of revenue generated by, between the residential situation or the commercial?
Well, you're probably looking at a different, difference in assessment on property taxes.
Sales tax.
Given its location off of Randall Road, we'd be speculating if there would be any sales tax generated from the site as it is off of Randall Road at this point. So just, at this point in time, it would be property taxes.
So did you say a three-story building?
It would be a three-story building.
Is it covered parking for every tenant, or?
No. We provided in our site plan garages, about thirty garages out of the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven spaces available.
So you mentioned eight-hundred square feet for the, is that a studio, or would that be?
It'd be a one-bedroom.
Then the larger one is about fourteen-hundred square feet, a three-bedroom?
Yes.
How about number of residents, you think that'll occupy all that? How many kids, any ideas?
How many three-bedrooms?
There would be nine three-bedrooms.
Fourteen, yeah. Fourteen percent of the property is three-bedroom.
You got nine three-bedrooms?
Yeah. Forty-five percent are one-bedrooms and forty-two percent are two-bedrooms.
So you don't know how many residents, you didn't figure that out?
No, I couldn't. I mean, I, and I could look at some national averages, but I couldn't, yeah.
So most of, kind of a mix of one and two-bedroom, just in a few, well, nine?
Yeah, nine, nine three-bedrooms out of.
Mostly singles and couples, probably.
I would, yeah, that's our guess. I think, I think we're going to get a mix of younger people and some older people that don't want to purchase anymore or sold their house. I think we want to try to.
Or young millennials who don't want to buy a house.
Yeah, exactly.
Given the unit count, based upon average, you're probably looking at two, on average of two per unit, maybe a little less with the small count of three-bedrooms available?
So a couple hundred people, maybe?
Yeah.
Probably about three hundred.
Well, it brings more people to our stores and our centers, I mean, it's.
Yeah. Well, one of the nice things about this property is it's actually literally walking distance to a lot of convenient retail, commercial uses. I mean, a couple of, you know, several restaurants within that area, don't even have to get on the street, a couple of drugstores, nail salon, things of that nature, really are literally within walking distance without even having to drive onto Randall Road, Main Street.
Mike, I have a question about the Springs, because this would be competing-
About what?
The Springs at Orchard, this would be directly competing with them. What is their current?
Yeah, so there's, there's two new properties. There's the Springs and there's Randall Highlands. Randall Highlands built one-hundred-and-forty units and we've got forty more units.
Right, but what is their vacancy rate currently? Are they at full capacity, are they having problems filling up?
They're full.
They're full.
They rented three-hundred units up in less than a year at the Springs. Yeah, I visited their property, and so did our market study people. And the Highlands is full. And those are really the only two new properties that I know of in the general vicinity. There are other properties, but they're older properties and they don't have central air conditioning. They don't have certain amenities that I believe that we'll be offering them. They don't have elevator buildings, even the Springs doesn't offer elevator buildings.
So in the clubhouse, is that where people like, where they do there, is that just for fitness, or they have like a community room?
We've got gathering rooms, we're going to have a fireplace in there, we're going to have several TVs. We really want to kind of, kind of promote the fact of people getting together and gathering there, whether you want to go watch a movie, you know, that we may be playing, or you want to get together, watch football on Monday night, or whatever. It'll have, it'll be, it'll have a kitchen, someone could use it to, you know, have a party or whatever.
How does that manage, is it just?
Well, so inside, inside the actual clubhouse, we'll have a leasing office and, and a separate office, a management office. There'll be, our goal is there'll be someone there all the time-
Oh, okay.
-or in normal hours, okay?
I got it.
Evening hours, I think we'll do smart lock kind of stuff where you'll be able to know who enters and who leaves and that kind of stuff.
How many parking spots have we?
It's a hundred and sixty.
I thought you said a hundred and thirty-seven.
Hundred and thirty-seven, excuse me, total. Thirty, thirty of those are garages.
So we meet the parking, our code does not differentiate between unit counts, so it'd just be two per unit, whether it be a three-bedroom or a one-bedroom. It's standard two, two parking spaces per unit.
Just two. There were a few over on the park.
Mike, do you have any idea the increase in numbers for the Randall Highlands? How many people are occupying the one-hundred-and-forty-four units?
The, as of right now, I don't have the, I don't have an occupancy rate. I do know that the forty units that are going up right now, they are actually, all, all the buildings, all six or seven buildings are under construction, and they already are pre-leasing. So they're actually moving quick over there.
As far as the occupancy, not the number of people, would you mean like the percentage of occupancy?
Well, that number of people.
Oh, okay.
A portion of the Randall Highlands is actually owner-occupied. I think there are six buildings in there that are owner-occupied.
Right, so it sounded good comparison.
That was before they, before they changed.
So in the courtyard, you got a couple of pavilions in it, what is it, just like concrete or trees in there?
Yeah, we'd like to maybe a little fire pit out there, might be a small water feature in there, something to encourage people to, A, something nice to look at from the balconies and someplace to gather. You know, we think socialization and gathering, especially with the younger people, is ever increasingly important. They want a place to go.
I thought I saw that you were going to have a dog park or something?
Yeah, we don't show one on the actual plan itself, but you almost have to. I mean, I'll tell you a story. So, so I visited the Springs and they allow dogs. And, you know, it's a problem. I mean, because of the mess they can make. Can you imagine three-hundred dogs, or, let's say half of them have dogs? That's a hundred-and-fifty dogs using the facilities twice a day. You know, that's a lot of pickup. And they actually do a DNA on every dog that goes in there. And if they're not, if they don't pick up after themselves, they get a fine. That's what I was told by the manager. Yeah.
Well, that's a good rule, I mean, people.
I don't know, I don't know who does the DNA, but they actually send it out or something and, you know, somebody's got to pick it up. They see it, it's just laying around, they supposedly find them. So it's a problem. So we'd like to think that we could create, one area is not going to work, because nobody's going to walk from one building to the other. On the way there, the dogs can use the washroom, you know that? So we'd like to think that maybe we could create some smaller areas for dogs to go. I mean, pets are like kids today, and so it's a necessity to have, be pet-friendly.
So you're going to be pet-friendly there?
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
I like the idea, it's gated.
Yeah, so right now, I mean, we're not a hundred percent sure whether we're going to build a fortress around the place, or we're going to do vehicle gating. We'd like to try to do as much as we possibly can. I think that's important. Some of the other communities, A, don't provide it, we don't provide some of their things, but we think that that gives a sense of security, especially to somebody, some elderly, that there's some, some security.
Or young kids.
Or young kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
You know, one of the things I like about it also, the parking is contained within the facility. And if you don't have enough parking places there, there's, there's no-
It's a problem, yeah.
It's a problem.
You got to have, yeah. So we got two per unit, is what the code calls for, plus I think about ten, ten cars. We think, we think the garages will be at a premium, but I didn't want to put garages, you know, all the way around the building. So we did select thirty of them and see how that works out.
Well, you certainly held on to the property long enough, so I think it, I think it's an improvement of just seventeen years of nothing there.
It's been a challenge.
Yeah.
So our next step is to come up with some more, more definitive plans?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you, I think the idea is, is agreeable.
Yeah, I agree.
So you're saying residential would be an acceptable use for the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, we need to zero in on the-
Sure.
... design and everything else at this point in time. And then, you know, the density, if the density changes positively, not good, but negatively, yeah, sorry. I mean, negative and less, less density in that.
I understand. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item two, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2015, the site plan was approved for the property at eleven-hundred Orchard Gateway. It is the property on the, would be the southwest corner of Orchard Gateway and Randall Road. As you know, there's a four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot, no third-party logistic warehouse building there that's been vacant for quite some time, since it's been built, actually. When we went through the site plan approval process, the plan commission added the condition that any fencing to go around the property was to be of black ornamental design. Again, that was added by the plan commission, not by the village staff or the village board. Fast forward a few years, there was the ordinance, I think it was actually early this year, where we amended the site plan ordinance to accommodate personalization mall. If you recall, they were going to remove the berm on the property, put additional parking in. That, that deal fell through. The property owner's working with a new tenant now, and as part of that, part of the lease, they were to put up a fence around the property. Again, you can see the, the site plan here. This is the building. The fence went up around it. Unfortunately, due to some unforeseen circumstances, personnel changes within the development company, the way the plans were situated with our third-party reviewer, it just led to the point where seventy-five percent of the fence was put up, and it was put up with chain-link fencing. And again, the condition being a black ornamental design. So I've been working with the, the property owner through the development company to kind of put a halt on the fence construction, call a timeout, and see where we need to be. So I'll go ahead and invite Josh from Opus up here to kind of go through kind of a little bit what happened. But also too, is that, again, being a committee discussion, this is open for discussion, you guys have the ability to still go out and take a look at the property. And in any case too, this would require an amendment to the site plan ordinance, so we would have to bring it back for formal approval before the board. So.
Thank you, Mike, for the introduction, and thank you to the village trustees and staff for the opportunity to speak to you. Try to make it as quick as possible. My name is Josh Bauer. I'm here from Opus Development Company on behalf of ownership of eleven-hundred Orchard Gateway. So Mike covered the ordinance that was put into place that required the black ornamental fencing, and through some personnel changes, albeit not an excuse at all, we just missed it. We started construction of the tenant improvement for a lease that we did with Glambia. And so Glambia is in the building now. We got our certificate of occupancy, but for the, the fence. And so started the build-out for them, you know, got the permit approved for their interior TI, submitted the fence on our permit drawings for the exterior. And unfortunately, the permit drawings didn't say chain-link, they just said eight-foot-tall top, you know, I think, single bar. It was vague, and so our, our construction team that was new, they weren't the ones that were working on the project three years ago when the site plan got approved, started, you know, putting up the chain-link fence, and then ultimately got a call from Mike that, you know, hold on, guys, you know, this requires the aluminum. And so we halted right away and looked back at the ordinance and realized that we, you know, we made a mistake there. And so, you know, one of the, one of the things that's so significant about this is, you know, when we made our deal with Glambia, we gave them a tenant improvement allowance, basically to cover their interior build-out and the exterior fencing. And so our allowance was based on pricing every, all of the interior build-out and pricing the chain-link fence that we thought was going to be okay. And ultimately, the difference between the chain-link and the, and the aluminum throughout the whole site is, would be a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost to either the tenant or the owner. And since it was an allowance provided by the owner to the tenant, it's, the tenant would technically have to pay for that, and of which they've said, no way, we're paying for that, that's not going to happen. And ultimately, I mean, they need the fencing for their security because they're a food operation and it has to be, you know, secure. So they're, they're at the point where they, you know, who knows, they might want to move out of the building. And so obviously, it's, it's significant. And so I'm, you know, we're asking for relief in this regard. And so our solution, and feel free to reference the, the site plan, which everything in red is the chain-link that's been put up. Everything in blue is currently, just the, just the posts are put up. And so it's kind of interesting that the, the part of the fence that has not been installed yet is for certain the most visible part of this site, you know, from Randall and Orchard Gateway. This is what I feel, you know, the ordinance was put into place for the black ornamental to, you know, I think for this portion of the building, because this is where all the cars drive by and where people would see it. And so it happens to be, you know, the area in which ownership is, is asking to install the black ornamental fencing. And so you can see on the renderings in your packets and then on the screen, you'll be able to see what that will look like. And so the hope for me is that the village will be okay with this solution because ultimately, this is the portion of the, of the site that's most visible. The, you know, if you look at the site plan, everything on the, on the south is hidden, and everything on the west side is basically hidden, and you've got twelve-hundred Orchard Gateway Midwest Warehouse who has the chain-link right there already. And so this, this northeast portion of the site is the most visible, and we, obviously, knowing our error, would love to be able to install the aluminum in that portion of the site and hope that that would be okay with the village. So thank you so much for the opportunity to talk, and with that, if you have any questions or anything, I'll be here to answer them.
So that you're asking us for is just, so this picture, you would like to keep it with the aluminum and then stay with the chain-link for the rest of the portion?
Yeah, exactly. So that, that's a rendering that the architects did, and so that, that aluminum is not currently installed yet.
Right, but that's what-
But that's exactly what we would be installing, and so-
That would be, so that, this corner is Gateway and Randall?
Correct.
So if I'm, if I'm looking, thinking correctly, so the Randall portion would be aluminum, and then the, behind the building would be chain-link?
Correct, exactly. And, and hopefully the, the site plan does a nice job, but we would be more than happy to provide additional renderings from different angles if, if requested, and obviously invite you all to stop by if you'd like to, you know, to see the portion of the building.
Randall Road's, it's the main road.
And obviously, we've got the berm there as well that's existing, and that blocks so much of it anyways, but take no chances.
It's still, actually, that's still visible from Randall Road though, by that berm. So I'll be frank with you, when I first heard this concept and heard about a fence being put around it, the only reason I acquiesced to approving it was because I thought it would be an attractive fence. So my question, first of all, question I have is, how is it, knowing that we were requiring a fence, it wasn't budgeted into your project?
So the, the fence was budgeted, but not the ornamental fence. And frankly, it was just, it was a miss. I didn't realize that this ordinance existed because I just joined Opus a year ago, and the developer that, that put this plan into place is no longer with the company. And so just looking at Midwest Warehouse's fence, the chain-link, I think our, our team just thought that was acceptable, and so we put it on the permit drawings, thinking, okay, well, we'll get a permit for it, and, and the construction folks didn't call out specifically chain-link. So, you know, obviously, the permit got approved, and then we found out it was, it was not.
Personally, I'm only one vote, but personally, I would be okay if you could extend your fence, the ornamental fence, to that corner of the building. At least visibly then from Randall Road, it would look all as one unified overall picture.
Yeah, I just want to-
You can still see where, where your red is, and that berm sticks out, you can still see that from Randall Road. Several of us, in fact, drive up that way quite often. So that would be my feedback to you, to see what, if that would be cost-effective for you to do it that way. The other, the other thing that's visible is along, is it Orchard Gateway that is going in? Is that, on the other side, on the west side of the building, is that little front part there, if you could add something there. And that way, the visible part of it would all look pretty nice, and you could still keep most of your chain-link fence.
You know, while I feel for the situation you're in, it's entirely self-inflicted. We have an ordinance for a reason, and it's our job as the board to maintain the aesthetics of the community as much as we can. I personally, I agree with Mike in that I didn't want a chain-link fence, I didn't want a fence to begin with. And, you know, unfortunately, the situation being what it is, it's not fair to everybody else who played by the rules, and now you're coming in and saying, whoops, we made a oversight or an error, or whatever the situation was. I mean, we have rules, we have ordinances, and we all need everyone to, to play by them. You know, I, I get it, it's a cost thing, it's, but I'm going to have to drive by and look at that chain-link fence all the time, and I just, it's not a good fit, not for the village.
I, I honestly like to go through and preserve, help the community keeping jobs in the area. Losing a tenant like that will probably lose a lot of jobs. So I do sympathize with the fencing and whatever we can do to help in making it good-looking for the rest of the people. I mean, just, it's, to me, it seems like there's a compromise in one way or another.
I agree with Mike and Laura. It just seems that we're kind of leveraging jobs and business for, of construction that should have been handled. The reason why, you keep mentioning the property to the west, we didn't like, that slipped by us, they have the chain-link. And our big concern is, you know, ten years from now, when it's rusty, you know, we still have commercial stuff in there that they go by there, and it's not just a warehouse district, you know? So that was, that was really the, the crux of going, gee, that looks bad, how that slipped by us. I specifically remember talking about this, we were looking at plastic-coated fencing-
Right.
-all kinds of things, just alleviate this chain-link, and it just seems like to me that, you know, as I understand the backboard- And it just seems like to me that, you know, as I understand, the back portion along the towway, it doesn't probably make sense to have like the aluminum fence. But it just seems like we're getting played a little bit. I just, I'm not real comfortable with it, even though I understand the problems and it's costing us so many money. But I don't know. I, I went by and looked, as, as Mike mentioned, I believe that west side also, actually more than what he said, not just across that gate. I think you have a gate there on the west side, but really should take it down probably 200 feet, you know, black fencing. But I'm not really happy with this way. It just seems, it's backwards, obviously, that, you know, you're coming asking after this. And it just seems, like Mike said, it should have been budgeted and it's probably not your guys' first building or somebody's first building. And, and so, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, you know what happened was, was then, this is, again, this is approved in 2015. They have, I have dealt with probably three different people on the development of this property with the development group. The plans that were submitted were for the interior build out. Now, being interior build out, my staff forwarded the plans directly to the third party consultant group reviewing the interior build out, which you mentioned, being part of the allowance for the interior build out. But in that packet was the fence, so I never got a chance to take a look at or review it. So it did come through, it did come through, it just happened to be on the interior plan set and not a separate permit. So it was brought in and approved, there was no specification on the fence. Or again, it was just as part of the interior build out of the plan.
But I mean, here we had Mark Sartino bring up a project and it's going to go through and it just seems like, you know, we start doing this kind of stuff and it sets a bad precedence that, hey, you know, I know you have an ordinance, but hey, you know, we got 200 people going to be living here and hey, can you, I just don't like that, so.
How about option B?
Option B? Is it listed?
Yeah, I'm beating on the, option B.
Where? It must be in a bag.
You mean develop an option B?
Well, it's in the right hand corner of the, upper right hand corner of this, they provided to us, it's outlined in yellow. And there's an option A, which is to put in the new fence. And option B is to installing a chain link fence with, I can't really read it easily, but it's with Arborvitae.
Arborvitae, yeah, they just want to put some shrubbery.
So basically, they want to finish what they started and then just put shrubs?
The, and, and that still shows on the site plan as option B. That was our original plan, was to come to you and present an option to dress it up with the landscaping and the Arborvitae trees. But we since decided, we thought it would be more visually appealing to go with the black ornamental on the, on the areas that were visible.
What, what are the number of employees that are going to work here under the, with the tenant?
There, it's around 100. And I'm not, so I don't know exactly what, because I haven't talked to Glambia in a while about it. But I remember at the beginning of the conversations with them, they're a distribution use. And so I think they've got a couple of different shifts and, and over the, you know, the course of the day, I think they're, you know, the average full time is around 100. But I, I can confirm in advance of the next meeting and find out for sure.
Well, I, I, I agree with my colleagues too. I mean, this is the third time in three years this has been before us. And we've kind of bent over backwards to accommodate. And I mean, it's, somebody didn't read the plans and that's unfortunate and I feel bad, but somebody didn't read the plans. And I assume there's more than one person that is reading the plans to just, to determine what type of fence goes in.
So, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't know if the PUD or regular code says exactly what fence can be installed. I know that obviously it says it in the, in the ordinance that we, that we did. But the construction folks, like when I talked to them and obviously, I mean, this is a real, like half a million dollar error, it's significant. So we're upset, but they don't, they didn't have access to that document. And so not to make any excuses, but that, that's why they, they went with chain link. And so it was not, you know, to pull a fast one, it was, it was none of that. You know, we've come in front of you a couple of times, you know, the last time was personalization, well, we really wanted to make that deal. We were going to buy land from you guys, we were going to park, you know, 1,000 parking spots and do all this work to the site because we wanted to obviously make a deal, we weren't trying to be difficult, we just wanted to, you know, get someone in the space. And so my concern here is if, you know, I, I totally understand where you're all coming from. But obviously, the concern is Glambia says, well, we're not paying for it. And, you know, AEW ownership says, well, we're not paying for it, we gave you an allowance, a bucket of dollars to do what you wanted. Now it's, you know, $400,000 more, obviously, losing that would be.
Does that figure $400,000, I think it was $450,000 is what I read, is that for the entire, fence around the entire area?
Yeah, correct, so.
I, let me, I provided or proposed that there were a compromise and that you bring the aluminum fence back to that back corner, right there.
Back, okay, the exact corner.
See what that would cost and perhaps if someone made an error, sometimes that costs money. And so it might be a little bit more of a cost to you, but not $450,000. And the other, on the other side of the building, which also faces another fairly busy street, Mark's suggesting you go down a little ways, I just said, well, at least across the front. Is there a gate in that front part?
Yes.
A swing gate, yeah.
So Mike, what you're saying is right here, where I've highlighted, facing in the northwest corner of the building, that gate there?
If that were.
Right here.
Aluminum, black aluminum.
And then, how far down are you talking? To this area here?
No, down to, keep going, there, that corner. Because that, that's all visible on Randall Road. And then the chain link can go around, I guess that's the south end and part of the, I, I say most of the thing, Mark's wanting it to go back a little bit.
I drove over and looked.
Depends on the cost, you know, can you?
But I mean, there should be, yeah.
You know, that south, south end, you're elevated on Randall Road, you're quite a bit above where the fence level is as opposed to one, you're down on the.
That doesn't impair the visual though.
Well, yeah, but you can't.
I think the other thing we have to look at too is uniformity within the development. I mean, we can't say this building has to have this chain link fence, you know, but they can have an exemption and these people can play by the rules. And now the development just kind of looks like a mixed bag. I mean, I think the ordinance is in place for a reason and that's to enforce uniformity. And I, I just don't think it's going to be aesthetically appealing. And this is, you know, most of the village at some point is going to be, drives down and has to look at this building if they're going to Woodman's, JCPenney, whatever it is. I mean, we owe it to our village to maintain a certain aesthetic appeal.
Yeah, I think a lot of this.
Those courses aren't going to, wouldn't do any good.
A lot of this contrived from the, what I'll call the 1200 building, which is directly to the west. The, the actual, there was no fence condition put on that property, they have the chain link fence. Now, again, that, that's also a food user that needs the security. That was sort of a, sort of a segue into this property. When this property came in, because there were no fencing considerations at that time, you know, at one point in time, I actually did petition the plant commission discussing fence materials. I didn't get any support to change that, so we left it as is. So we have the chain link fence on the 1200 building and they were matching it on this building. Again, that's where the miscommunication came in. So what's on there now would match the building to the, to the west, with the exception of, if there is some consideration, the building and the, the portion of the northeast corner, that was where the, the attention was paid during the site plan review process. They actually moved the office elevation to the northeast corner where it is now. There was the berm put in and also too, there's a land bank parking space in the northeast corner where the fence is shown in blue. And there was a trailer parking prohibition put in there as well. So a lot of attention was paid during the site plan review process to maintain the northeast, basically the northeast portion of this property as being the visually prevalent facade and site work from the intersection there. So that's where a lot of this came from.
I think this is just a slippery slope because if we make exceptions for one group, we're going to, all of a sudden, people are going to, you know, claim ignorance and, and then we're going to be doing it, you know, every other, every other year, every other development.
Well, here, and the, the other thing is, you say, well, the tenant's not going to want to pay for it and the owner's not going to want to pay for it. The owner has to pay for it. I, I mean, well, because the fence is required, whether or not you're going to get it back from the tenant, that's not really our problem.
We would, we would just take it down, we wouldn't put the fence up. So then they'd just be operating without security.
Find another tenant, is that what it is? You will lose your tenant?
That, well, that, that's the big issue here because I'm not the owner, I'm just the, we're just the development manager. So I mean, for, that would be the concern. But I completely understand where you're coming from as well, all of you, you know, I do appreciate your.
I have a question. So it says fence post, what about, it says link fabric. What is that link? Because is there a link fabric?
I think it just refers to the wire mesh.
Yeah, is there a, I mean, there's different wire mesh, there's black, there's different color, rubberized link, rubberized black looking posts, right? Have you all seen that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what it is, is, what is the fence, you ever see that? It's a, it's a link that's black, it's rubberized, so it doesn't rust and.
It's coated. That's a coated fence. We talked about that, but it didn't go anywhere back.
So it's still a chain link fence, but instead of the silver, it's black.
But isn't it coated with plastic?
Yeah.
It's not painted, it's coated or something, so it won't rust.
Well, we'd be obviously very open to considering that. At the end of the day, I know it's just trying to, you know, it's a cost issue.
It looks like from a distance, it will match.
Looks a little better. I'm, you know, I'm not opposed, I'm, I'm open to helping you, but it's just like Laura said and Trustee Curtis said, you know, we're setting somewhat a precedence when we start putting the cart in front and then working backwards, you know, and it just, you know.
Why don't you look at the cost, sir, why don't you look at the cost of extending the aluminum fence to that corner like I suggested? And then cover the rest of the fence with the black, you'd have to replace it, I guess, but are the posts covered with the plastic as well?
Yes.
I just want to be clear too, the, the fence itself is not required. So it was just basically saying that if a fence were to be put up, it would have to be of this design.
Well, the tenant's asking for the fence, is that what I understood you to say?
So the tenant wants the fence and so the, the deal we made with the tenant is, here's a bucket of money, you know, use it for what you'd like to use it for. And one of the things they wanted is the fence. And so if the cost of the fence goes up by, you know, 300, 200, 300,000 dollars, it's still a tenant cost. And the tenant's going to say, well, we, you know, our allowance bucket doesn't cover that, we might use it.
That's what I'm saying, the cost of extending that fence is only going to be, if you're, if you're saying that all the way around is 300, $300,000 more, I'm only suggesting you go about less than a quarter, about, it looks like about 20% of that distance. So now we're talking about maybe 50,000, you know, or so.
Well, no, we'd be, I'd be very happy to explore that with, you know, my colleagues and see what that cost is. I think, you know, I'd be more than happy to explore that, I just didn't know if the other trustees sounded like they, they weren't sure what they, you know, what to do.
How many year lease you have with this tenant?
Signed a, jeez, I should know this, Mike. I think it was a 10 year lease with them, it was a long term lease.
So in 10 years, if they want to move, that fence can be taken down and accommodated and all their tenant?
In 10 years from now.
It's not a permanent fixture, this one's?
No, 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 no.
Well, you know, I'm always interested in compromise and I know that there's always a, there's a reason for everything. But that's why I was interested in option two, would be, with some evergreens, make it more attractive and, and that type of thing. As opposed to replacing the entire fence or.
Is the fence up now?
Everything in red is up right now. And so, you know, where it's, option B that we, you know, we pulled away from, if the village wanted to see renderings of what the chain link would look like with these Arborvitae's planted, we'd be happy to send those pictures along as well. There'd be a lot of, a lot of trees on the, you know, on the border of the property. But that, you know, that could work very well for us if, if the village would be open to seeing that.
Yeah, like Mike said, you need to have some of that black fencing in that, on Orchard Gateway, both sides and down a ways anyway. I, I just think that's how I'm going to look at it. You can put some evergreens around it, but you're still going to have that industrial warehouse looking fence, chain link. And that's what I think we're looking to alleviate with that.
Well, you know, the one thing different about this as opposed to the property to the west is that this fence is just around the outer perimeter on the east and west and the back. It's not across the front like the other is. Seems to me the other goes across.
Yeah, it does go across, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that fence goes around.
It's not the same, same kind of, kind of effect, but.
It's an effect.
Well, it is along Randall Road.
But nothing in the front, so the other one's got it going through the front on the.
And that's what made us think more sensitive to this property when we looked at it as that other fence looks pretty ugly, you know.
I, I would go along with Mike, Trustee Lowry's suggestion to go all the way down to the corner with the aluminum and then across the front on Orchard Gateway on the west side.
Understood.
Well, that's certainly a compromise.
If, if, if we did some renderings showing, because I, I felt like on Randall, once you get kind of to where, you know, you go up, you can't really see it, but obviously, you know, you're everyday residents who drive by it. So I, I actually value your opinion more than my own. But if we were able to show some renderings and some photos or videos from driving up Randall, would you consider, you know, some sort of compromise on going all the way down? And obviously, you know, I don't have a lot of leverage here, so I, I'm just asking.
Landscaping, if you didn't, I'm not saying Mike's wrong, but I'm just saying as far as compromise, I mean, can you hit that heavy with the Arborvitae's maybe even? Where that would, you know, if you just went halfway down or I guess where it goes from blue to red there, even if you went that far, then.
No, I say, if you're going to do that, I would say at least go down to the where it's, the corner.
You know, why, why are we constantly giving up our position here? We are the ones that establish the ordinance and now I keep hearing that this fence is going to get more and more ugly by the minute. Now, I think we had a very good compromise with what Mike was saying to extend it down the sight line where it's visible on Orchard and Randall Road. Now, we didn't make the mistake, we, you know, we had the ordinance in, in place. I would be willing to agree with Mike on that compromise as long as it is not, chain link is not invisible from Orchard Gateway or Randall Road. I don't feel we need to be giving up any more concessions at this point, other than, you know, I mean, you guys have a 3100 square, 3100 square feet of fencing and you only have 30% left to go. And we're, we're only asking you for probably a 15% extension. So I, I don't, I don't feel like we need to be giving up anything else at this point.
Okay, so, so just to confirm, run the blue, so run the black, you know, aluminum fencing down to the, to the corner, right above where the north arrow is, just, just above that. And then the frontage, so the, the area that's parallel with Orchard Gateway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's actually very clear feedback, so I appreciate that, very precise. So we can go back to the drawing board and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, well, I, when I get in tomorrow, we'll price this all and, and be prepared to come back to you on the, on the 7th. I do appreciate the, you know, the clarity on what you're looking for. Sometimes it's left very open and then you don't know. And I know Glambia wants this done ASAP, so we, you know, we want to work to our solution quickly. So thank you very much.
So I, I'm going to ask one quick question because I, I want some clarification for the staff. On the bottom where the fence is coming down, is it, is it the top part of the section that slants on a 45 or is it the bottom? It's the bottom part by the facade of the building?
Yes, but you can't see the north arrow, but yes, it's the second 22 and a half angle, degree angle.
So the, the part that slants on the diagonal, you, you want that or, uh, black ornamental or just until it, just a straight line until it slants?
All the way to the southernmost point.
Yeah, okay, okay, so including the diagonal.
The entire east side.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Hey, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
And what about the, on the west side, were we going to, you want to include that little section there too?
Yeah, the, the frontage that's. Right. Yeah, the, the frontage that's parallel the Orchard Gateway.
Right.
Yeah, I made a note to, to, uh, get that priced in as well.
What they're saying.
Mike, is there anything we can do, um, next time or that they're more aware of?
No.
That fencing requirements or anything?
Yeah, typically require, um, separate fence permits. Um, like I said, there wasn't a, it was just an unfortunate event the way it did because when they, when this came up, they said, well, we, we submitted for the fence plan. And I said, well, no, the only thing we have on, on, on file is the buildup permit. But I did go and open that, that building permit file, which was reviewed by our third party. And yeah, there was a, the fence was in there. So, I guess it's just a matter of just keeping, it's, it, just having staff keep an eye out for things like this when we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We got a compromise. Sounds good. Item number three, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is the restoration and illumination of the silo, uh, that we've been talking about from time to time. Uh, the last time it came up, uh, we, uh, were going out with, uh, M2, Mueller and Muller, and they were going to work with Schuler and Shook, which is a lighting consultant. And we ended up working with WBK to do, um, the structural analysis of the structure itself, the silo. And at this point, what we wanna do is we wanna bring concepts back to the village board in order to get some feedback and, uh, and, and move forward from this, um, this standpoint. So, just as a reminder, the strategic plan calls for enhancements to the riverfront, including reuse of the silo as a, as an enhancement itself. Uh, there is currently $300,000 in our Route 31 TIF budget for this project. Uh, that includes the restoration of the silo and the illumination of the silo, um, moving forward. Uh, if you recall, we had a concept plan done a while back that included several different aspects of making the silo an attraction. I, I think it was the consensus at that time that the initial thought from the board, uh, in strategic planning sessions and whatnot, was that the primary goal was make it safe and then light it and then go from there as we, you know, apply for grants or whatnot along the way. Um, that being said, though, we did budget 300,000 in our TIF, uh, budget for this. Uh, we've been working with the Aurora area visitor convention bureau. They identified a tourism grant through the Illinois Department of Tourism, uh, that might actually provide funding for this type of project. Uh, we think it's a pretty good fit. So, we've already prepared a, uh, pre-application, if you will. We have a couple blank spots in it that we're waiting for feedback tonight and we'd like to apply for that. Um, you couldn't get up to 50%, up to a couple hundred thousand dollars back from that grant program. So, hopefully we can even get some funding. Um, that being said, what I'm gonna do tonight is Mike is going to walk through slowly. Uh, as we go through these, I wanna make sure that the board remembers that these are all still concepts. So, what happens is the board, uh, it'd be great to get some feedback on if you like any of it, if you don't like any of it. At the end, I'm gonna tell you what the staff's, uh, interpretation of the concepts are from a maintenance standpoint. And then that'll help us for the next phase, which is either come back again with some tweaked drawings or move forward with a construction design phase, which means we would actually go out, have our consultants design bid specs and, and bid it out. So, that being said, Mike, if you would go back to that first slide with the restoration costs. Okay. So, last time we met and we moved forward, um, we've really tried to hone in on the price of this project. So, we got our initial restoration back, uh, cost back from the, um, from WBK engineering. Originally, it was double that. And so, we, we paused the project, went back to WBK and had them look at ways to, uh, basically drop the restoration cost, making it a safe structure, but reduce the cost. Luckily, we found some, um, some savings, including, uh, the painting of it. Uh, there was, uh, there was an error in one of the line items that actually saved us quite a bit of money, which was good. So, the current cost of the restoration project, um, right now is estimated to be 130,000 dollars. That includes the actual, uh, 20% contingency as well. So, uh, that's a padded number to make sure that we don't go over budget. Uh, that being said, next slide, please, Mike. Thank you. Uh, just a history. What makes this a unique project is this silo, uh, unlike, for instance, the Peck Farm Silo, it, which is a substantial structure, but it's only about 50 feet tall. This is a hundred foot tall structure. It is highly visible in, in a large area around us. Um, it's historically was a grain silo and it's about 19 feet wide at its diameter. And, uh, and then we're gonna take you through the next slide, which is the color. So, the current silo, as you know, looks like a tannish concrete structure. Um, we wanted to show this up front. Any work that has to be done with restoration, especially if you're gonna illuminate it, they're gonna seal it. And so, by sealing it and to have the light reflect off of it, uh, they are going to have to paint it. And so, with that being said, um, and I should've mentioned is, uh, M2 Design and, uh, representatives from Schuler and Shook are here tonight. So, I will have them come up if you have specific questions at the end. Uh, but basically, they presented a few colors to the staff, mostly in the white variety because that reflects the best for light. So, this was just a rendering of what it would look like once restored. You notice that the windows also have framing on them. Right now, they're just open air, um, open to erosion. Water gets inside the structure. This would be basically sealed window frames. They'd be enclosed, uh, like cabinets, if you will. Um, and basically then you would seal the outside, exterior structure with a, with a sealant. Okay. Thanks, Mike. Uh, this is just a couple pictures. Mike can show these. This is the current state of the silo. So, it absolutely needs some work. There is definitely, there's some beautiful wood in the inside of it that goes all the way up, that one day if we do anything with the interior, we'd like to maybe be able to take down and reuse. Um, but in the meantime, there's also evidence of what was a fire at some point decades ago, probably. Uh, so there's some cleanup that needs to be done inside the silo as well. And this is just, that was just a picture to show how close it is to the property line of harness. Okay. So, here's the lighting concepts. I'm going to just go through these and I will tell you that one of the most, um, unique things about it is they, they did a nice job of making this à la carte. So, what you're gonna see in all these options are each feature is individualized, so that each feature has its own individual pricing. So, you can mix and match. If you don't like the concepts or you like aspects of it, you can say, I don't like this, but I like this. And you can actually create your own. Uh, the first one is lighting of the windows. As you can see, just in these renderings, uh, there's a, you can see the windows are lit. There's a couple windows. There's one on the front, one that faces east. There's one that faces, uh, to the north. And on the back structure where the grain shaft was, there are, I believe, five that face the west. Uh, so this is the à la carte and I'm just.
What'd you call that shaft?
The, it's a grain elevator, was it not? Or?
Oh.
I was just making sure. Um, so as you see, they label them A and C. That's gonna come into effect as we go through the pricing. Okay. So, if you go through this, uh, type of situation, and I'm, I'm not gonna go this much detail on all of them, uh, just trying to set the, the pace here. But on the first one, you'll see on the price breakdown, there is a cost for controls. So, to light the structure, you have an individual cost for the light beam at the top. You have an individual cost for the windows. Uh, you also have a cost for the controls. That is so that you can do multi-color shows. You can blend the colors to make different colors. You can control those remotely from the office at Village Hall and we can make it any colors we want. So, anyways, uh, but you need a control system to do that. Okay. This is the same concept, only this time instead of one beam off the top, uh, this is multi, multi-beams. And on the next picture, uh, Mike will show you the top view. You can see that basically those little circles are the individual fixtures. Okay? And, uh, it should be noted that the page numbers don't match up. Um, there's pages skipped because we took several renderings of the same exact concept in just different colors. And we took them out so that there wasn't just a bunch of fluff in the presentation tonight. Um, so there's your à la carte pricing. So, this is the, the same pricing, only this time instead of, uh, going with A and, and C, you're now switching to B and C.
I don't know if you wanna mention too, the uplighting. We talked about the FAA and having to make application.
Yeah. I was, uh, at the end, when I talk about maintenance and reasons why the staff might lean towards a different, um, project, uh, but Mike brings it up now, is the one thing we are looking at is we've reached out to a local airport. Um, there was some concerns that shining a beam off the top at a certain height, uh, requires or could be an issue with the FAA. Uh, so we did reach out to someone we know at a local airport who referred us to a different local airport that's in our flight pattern. And, uh, their response verified that we would, what we'd have to do is we'd have to go to Schuler and Shook to consult and get all of the, uh, the lumens and everything and, and try to determine the amount of, that the beam shoots off the top. And then you'd have to go through an FAA process essentially to verify that that's acceptable. Um, if it is in fact within a flight pattern of a local, uh, in our case, it could be DuPage Airport. It could be Aurora Airport. Uh, this is, the added feature on this one is the ground illuminated lighting. Um, that would be basically done on a ring structure. If you, you, it's hard to tell, but at the bottom, you can see the silo is dark. And that's because the structure would be elevated to some degree in order to keep people from, uh, basically being able to mess with the lights. Uh, they'll be elevated most likely about 10 feet off the ground. Okay?
Hmm.
Next slide.
Beautiful.
Okay. So, this is the same one, only with one beam of light. Now, you have multi-beams of light. So, like I said, these are very similar. They're just variations.
Can I ask a quick question? Uh, earlier with our rendering of, for the entire project, didn't we have, uh, canopies or something around? Would, would they, these lights be blocked?
So, the structure, okay, that, that's a good point to bring up. So, the original concept, uh, going back probably a year or so ago was the, there was a deck around the base of the silo and there was talk of, um, like umbrellas and, and tables and whatnot because we wanted to create a public space by the river. Uh, when we honed in on that, that was done by the park district on our behalf as we were partnering with them on some aspects of the project. When we went to our design firm, uh, M2, and they actually created the full concept for the silo, they did in fact include what we call basically a lower observation deck, which would be about 20 feet up the silo and about 30 feet above grade of the river to create an area where people with a ramp, handicap accessible, ADA compliant would get you up to the top so that you can actually, um, have a nice view of the river. You might be able to have your lunch up there, tables and whatnot. This structure, we've talked about when we do the construction documents, would have to take into account that if we ever did that aspect of the concept, you would have to raise the structure, which is why it's most likely gonna be on a ring that we'll be able to elevate. And it might even be affixed to the silo eventually.
You were talking about the top, weren't you? No, I was exactly that. So, that the deck, so it would be above the deck. So.
Correct.
We wouldn't have to go back and rebuild it and redesign.
Mm-hmm. And, and the truth is, is every aspect of the silo concept beyond lighting was substantial in price. So, what we had said was we could try to get individual grants or, you know, or go after major grants to get a huge chunk at one time. But they're substantial. I mean, that deck project alone, I believe, was several hundred thousand dollars, but it included a walkway all the way to the village's parking lot that we just built. Um, so, th- this could be several years before we even, you know, it could be a year, it could be three years, it could be five years before we secure funding for a grant like that. We don't know yet.
Uh, going back to the FAA situation, um, did you say that there, how, how would they expect us to limit the lights shooting up?
My guess would be that they would either tell you, you'd have to dim them to a certain lumen.
Oh.
And, 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 you know, I don't know, Schuler and Shook would understand the, the lumens more than I would. But, um, the other thing would be is they would simply deny it. It's an application. We have a form that was, uh, we, we saw the form that you actually have to put all the information down, send it to the FAA, have them review it, and then they determine.
The light shining in the air.
To make sure that it's acceptable or not.
Well, you can fly through the light.
So, I don't know if it's something to do with the landing patterns or whatnot, but that was the direction we received.
Well, I guess where I'm kinda going was I, these, the, all, the group of fingers shooting up versus the one in the middle. Uh, would the one in the middle also require a, a permission from the FAA?
Yeah. From what our understanding is, it's any light that shot up from a structure, I don't have the form in front of me, but the wording specifically says when you're, uh, shooting lights off of a, of a structure of a certain height or it's within, or the light extends into a certain area around an airport, whatever, um, their parameters are, you go to them, make sure that it's okay and then they move forward.
Okay.
Just so you know, like when they have these grand openings, like a commercial or retail, they'll have like these spotlights. They have to, they have to, they have to be okayed by the, uh, the FAA. I got a question. So.
Yes, sir.
What, what grant would be appropriate? Would it be Oslot?
For, for this one, the tourism grant that came up was one that we haven't seen recently.
Tourism grant?
Yeah, through the Illinois Department of Tourism. It is specifically for development projects to make things a local attraction. And so, uh, I believe and, and.
Is that a state grant?
It is a state grant. It's, it's, it's partially, I wanna say, uh, it's through the Department of Tourism. I can't remember off the top of my head. A DCO has an actual hand in it as well. I believe the actual, um, program is managed by them.
And that would pay for the illumination or pay for the decking?
They would, we would submit the whole illumination and restoration project to them and we would request funding. Um, I believe it's three or 400,000 you can ask for. And they, they would, if they approve it, it's up to 50%.
It's part of community development.
Okay. I was just wondering.
And the nice thing is, this is one of those situations where the Aurora area convention, uh, visitor convention bureau, I believe, has actually secured a grant like that in the past. So, they have experience. Uh, it's on my understanding that they've applied for this type of grant a few years back.
Can't we just try to figure out if we can apply for the permit, uh, for the lighting up in the sky? If it gets approved, then we can move on. If it gets denied, then we know we don't have it.
Well, there's other options that don't.
Information with them as the lumen, whatever.
And not to mention the fact, I mean, there's other concepts that don't even have a light on top. So, I wanna make sure the board, if the board doesn't like an option, um, it likes an option without a light on top, we wouldn't even have to go through the process.
I think.
So, uh, next slide, Mike. So, this next option here is basically it is just a, it is the light itself at the bottom and it is lights of the window. And that is just a basic option.
I think that also.
Is that one also the ring at the top?
I can't.
It's hard to tell on the PDFs that we put together. Um, so on this one here.
That pink ring that goes around the top?
Not on that.
Yeah, that one I don't think is in this option because it's not shown in the price.
It just looks like that on there. Um, it's the reflection. So, we'll, we'll show you. There is an option where there's gonna be a ring at the top. Uh, so this is illumination at the bottom and the windows being illuminated. Uh, next slide, Mike. This one here has the ring at the top illuminated. Um, this one's a unique feature. The, uh, the issue that we had when we looked at this is to create that ring at the top, you have to basically put together several individual, I believe there are two feet, uh, one or two foot sections. So, there were literally dozens of lights that would have to be connected to create that ring. Um, our concern from a maintenance standpoint, being a hundred point, a hundred feet up, is if one goes down, it's gonna make the rest of the ring look like there's a missing light. And it could be weeks by the time we decide how to get up there and fix it. Next slide. Um, so that's the pricing for that. This one here has a structure on top. This one's a little unique, um, because the structure, i- it can be changed. It can be altered into different colors. It's, it's almost like a mesh fencing, if you will. Uh, it would create some, uh, there would be some ingenuity that would be needed to create this. I don't think anything like this has really been done before.
It's like a hamster wheel.
Yeah. There's several individual LED lights that are on those, uh, those strings. So, uh, I believe several hundred lights total. So, it, that one's unique, but it does create the ability to potentially create you, um, very simple shapes and whatnot. These are all going up in price as we get more elaborate with the top, just so we're clear. All right? So, this one here, basically you're taking ground lighting and you're using several additional lights to create, uh, patterns and whatnot on the silo. And you can do a lot more unique things when you can create different types of, uh, visual patterns that move and whatnot. Um, so, once again, this is more expensive because you're putting in, as Michael will show you on the next slide, if you look at the base, they're putting in way more lights at the bottom than originally, um, designed. Okay. So, this is a good slide to basically, um, kinda pause on. So, here's where the staff is. And, you know, when it comes to, uh, decorative projects, so to speak, I always like the village board to be the guiding light as far as this is, you know, your village. You need to tell the staff how you see this project moving forward. Um, but all I wanna do is provide you the facts and the details. So, we have 300,000 dollars budgeted for this project. The restoration, assuming that that costs 130,000 dollars. And, and if you go with a basic option versus some of the more elaborate ones, the control price is 12,000. If you go to a more elaborate project, the price of the controls go up. Um, some of them go up to 32,000. So, if you're talking about.
Is that a one-time cost or?
At the beginning, but you have to replace it. If the lighting control system ever broke, you would have to replace that. So, the 12,000 dollars covers the lighting controls for most of the, uh, first options. And what staff was looking at is based on the. And what staff was looking at is based on the board's feedback and the pricing and the potential maintenance, one of the things we thought was, uplighting was probably the most important because we, I think the consensus we felt was that the board wanted the silo illuminated, the silo itself. The second thing is, we're going to be restoring the window frames anyways, they have to put those frames in. It is 15,000 or so, 13,000 to put light in each of those windows, but as Mike can show you on the next slide, okay, that one, we'll go back to that in a second, sorry, next slide after that. If you don't light the windows, that building to the right shows you what happens when you have basically blank space. It's a cavern, those windows are cavernous, so that you would basically just get black rectangles. You would still see color on the silo, but the whole silo itself wouldn't be illuminated. You would see it like that. So if you can go back to the other slide. Now this slide here, for reference, is just ground lighting and lighting the windows and this was a 4th of July option, just to show you what you could do with a red, white and blue pattern. But what's important about this slide is, this is more accurate, the depiction of how the silo would be illuminated as far as brightness. The original slides when we did this did not, if you can see, there's a lot of dark spots on the silo, a little dull. This, based on the actual lumens, they had, they tweaked it for us to show us what the actual visual would be. Up close, it would be very illuminated. So it would look like this. So what the village staff was looking at was, maintenance of getting up to the top, the LED boards typically last, I believe, seven to 13 years. So, once you put them in, there isn't much of an ongoing maintenance initially, you know, maybe on time you have a freak incident, but every time we have to go up to, you know, the top, it would require either us somehow coordinating with the fire district to get up there with their ladder truck or renting a lift. There is no internal system to get to the top right now. So the staff's thought was, budget-wise, goal-wise and maintenance-wise, at least at the minimum, do the ground lighting and light the windows. The windows will give us the option to also do additional color so it adds accents on the silo.
The windows have changed color too?
They can, yeah. Or we can simply just, we can have them even be the same color so that it all blends. The beauty of this is when the control system is put in, we have a meeting with that company. That company will give us not only some ideas on some presets for certain holidays and whatnot that we can change them, but they'll also teach us how to blend colors. And there will be some trial and error where, well, my guess is like, we'll be like, oh, for this holiday, let's try to make it this color and put a couple splashes of green and a couple splashes of red up and let's see how it looks. And we might have to stay late, take a look and see if it looks right and then mark it down so that we know every year at that time, we use this color coordination and that's what it would be.
I like it better than the lights streaming up from, just the simple fact that when you illuminate the silo itself, it just seems like it's more people local would see it. I mean, I suppose if you go straight up, everybody in the world knows that we're here. But I like the fact that the whole, this rendition that you have here, you can see the whole silo is lit up. I like that. To me, that looks the best.
Mark, this is really, because this is a better picture of what the illumination really would be. If what he had in the white, if he'd redone it, it would have been the same, you know.
No, what I'm talking about there is when you shoot them straight up, it just doesn't, I mean, I'd rather see it not shoot straight up, just my opinion. You know, I know I'm only in one vote.
It's shooting straight up, but from
No, no, I'm not
Oh, he's talking about the white beams.
The beam shooting up and the light, you know, the
From the top.
The first
Oh, the circle, the top?
Yeah.
No, the beam shooting up, the FAA would have to approve.
Those.
I like the beam.
It looks like a rocket ship to me. I mean, I don't know, it's just my opinion.
Right, that's what I thought.
I think if we could do it, it's going to put us on the map, it's going to make, it's going to be a draw, it's going to be
I know, more people see that shooting straight up, but I still like the illumination of the tower itself instead of the light shooting, that's just my opinion.
Oh, no, I agree too. I think we should do both. I like the multi-beam shooting straight up and I like the ground illumination with the different colors.
I like both. I think you need to have a variation. If you just have, you need some to draw interest to
What if you have it with it
Right.
Above and not below, you know? You can have all kinds.
You can mix it up, yeah.
You know, when we first talked about this, we talked about the, the Christmas tree that we have now, that we've had for umpteen years. And the concept was that not only do we have a Christmas tree, but there could be other things that would be illuminated at the top of the silo. And we've sort of gotten away from all that. And I'm sure that, you know, I still, I still would love to see a Christmas tree up there at Christmas time and I'd like to see some other displays. I don't know if any of you have seen Aurora's new display on top of the Leland Hotel, but it's really, really nice. They've changed from what they had before, so
Is it on top of the Leland, you said?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, there's, and whether they still have the old up there as well as the new, I don't know. But the old was sort of a swail lighting with a star on top. This is a star with sort of cascading things coming down. So if you haven't seen it, you ought to look at it.
That last slide, the red one, without the beams coming out, shooting out the top, what's the cost for that rendering right there?
So the light beam, the one single beam, if I'm correct, is 28,000. It's the cluster is the one that has the multiple lights at the top going across.
I don't want either one of those. So it'd be the lighting for the windows, the flood uplighting.
And what at the top?
What's the direct view light ribbon? That's the thing going around the top.
That's the thing going around the top.
I think at the very least, I would like to see the windows and the flood uplighting. I mean, the whole point of this was to make it a focal point. That is, makes it a focal point to justify adding another $200,000 or
No, okay, so here's, here's where it'd be. I just did some rough math. It's 265 or so for the restoration, the $12,000 control system and to light the windows and to do the uplighting from the base of the silo. So that's 265 roughly.
And 28 more for the single
28 more puts it at 293 and that's for the single beam on top, so that's
We got what, 300,000?
And we have 300,000 budgeted, so you'd still be under our budget number. And truth be told, I mean, hopefully it's not more, but a lot of times like these numbers with the contingencies already in there and everything, hopefully there's enough that this project might even come in a little bit less.
I think the beam just creates more interest, just my opinion.
What's the cost for the multi-beam shooting up? Because the one just looks like an aiming flame.
If I'm not mistaken, isn't, wouldn't the multi-beams be
Do you do the single light?
It would be, it would be B.
It looks like a big aiming flame.
What do you need multiple? Looks like a candle.
The multiple look like
Why, so the, the single is 12 and the multi is 28? Okay, so it's actually flipped, it's actually flipped here then. So it would be 28 for the cluster and 12 for the
I think it all looks good.
I think that's where I was getting messed up too, because it, the single beam is more expensive than the multiple.
I do too. I think we need, we need the whole thing.
The one that's called the cluster, which is made out of steel. The effect is a cluster, picture falls together in the center. The other one is one, the texture so the thickness of the beam does not appear as impressive as the one that
Then you can color each beam then.
So it's more intense beam, the A, okay.
Are the beams RGB LEDs? So we have the ability to change them in every different color that we can.
Mike, what'd she say? I couldn't, we can't hear. Well, I think what she said was, the A, it says cluster, but what that is, is a cluster of concentrated light to do the one concentrated beam up, so it would be, it's like this would be more of a cluster of fixtures, correct? It's not just one bulb. Okay, and then you have the cluster or the
Yeah.
Correct.
Now, can they change colors, those lights, those shooting up lights?
They can change, but you have to be aware that you'll be
Could you come up into the mic?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up.
Certain colors will want that rate.
I can't understand.
Obviously, the RGB feature of the fixture will have the full intensity when we have all the colors mixing to create white. When they are broken up or in different mixes, it's pretty much, red is only the red component on, the other two components, blue and green, will be off. So the intensity is probably a third of what you see when it's the white. So, color, appearance will be a mix of brightness and saturation. And when we're shooting up, it will also depend on the conditions of the sky because, you know, a more cloudy or foggy day will probably pop up the colors more intensely. A more clear day will only be, like white will be really impressive, but maybe red or blue will be a little bit dimmer.
Does the FAA care which color? Do you have to get a special
We don't know yet, but
They will, and it's, we got to get that approved. I mean, I don't know.
Well.
Maybe we will.
So here's, here's the way you can, okay, so before we get full direction, so I want to clarify, it's actually cheaper. So we, Mike and I were just looking at it and what was confusing, and she explained it, was that the cluster is actually the one beam, but it's actually $12,000. So it's 277 roughly to do the beam from the top, the lighting from the ground, the windows.
One beam.
The one middle beam from the top. So it's 277 to do all that with restoration and the control system. It's 265, so 12,000 less to not do the beam on the top.
Oh, okay.
Now, if the board is, if the direction is to go forward with the ground lighting the windows and that, that cluster beam, that one beam in the middle, what we would do next before we design the construction documents, we go to get that approval from the FAA to find out what they allow. If they don't allow it, I would come back to the board and let you know that they didn't allow it. So, or at least, you know, send it out in a message to you that we're moving forward because the FAA denied it.
How much is it for the multiple beams then?
28,000.
We could do the multiple beams and it may not have to go as high also, because they have the same effect, as opposed to one beam shooting up in the middle. I don't, I think that we need to go for the big picture. I really do. I don't think we need to look back and say, oh, it's going to be $12,000 more, or it's going to be 25, $5,000 more. Let's go with what we really want and then that's what we present, that's what we're going to try to get grants to help us with. And if it doesn't come through, we can change. We can fall back. But let's, let's not, let's not go for something less than what we want because we think it's going to cost 20,000 more or 40,000 more. Let's do what we, and let's see what our grants come in at and see what we can get the money to do it.
And the good thing is, is everything
We might be able to get that tourism grant.
I mean, everything that's been said tonight, everything that's been said out here tonight is that this is within our budget to do, basically, but what I need from direction is, I want to make sure we're doing the single beam and not the, the lights all the way around.
If we're going to do the beam shooting up, I'd rather see the multiple beams rather than the single beam.
Multiple? Okay, so that, okay, all right, that's good. So the $28,000 one, okay.
Yes.
Can you just show a photo of what we're talking about so we're all on the same page?
Yes, I want to make sure we are 100% on the same page. Hang on a second.
That one, that.
I want a ring around there too.
Yeah. Well, that's another 35 grand.
What?
The ring around it, around the
Yeah, around the top.
Is another 35 grand.
Can I, if, if we're
Now, we're getting a little
That was for all the
That might be
I'm just talking about one ring. The one ring wasn't 30 grand.
Isn't the direct view light ribbon?
Oh, you're talking about that pink ring around the top.
That's the direct view light ribbon. That's $35,000.
That's the ribbon.
That one right there?
And what, if we were going to expl, yes, the top there, that's the ribbon. If we were going to explore that, I would like Schuler and Shook to explain it because, like I said, it's not as easy as just one ribbon, it's multiple lights put together.
I'd just say something from a design perspective. I like the clean lines of the straight lights. When we introduce a ribbon, it kind of bifurcates it and now we've got the sleekness of the silo that's now separated from the light, whereas if we get rid of the ribbon, it becomes seamless almost. And I think it's going to be more visually appealing. When we start adding too much gimmicks, it's going to look like a circus toy at some point.
Yeah, well
It's, everybody sees lighting in color differently.
Aurora looking at a rendition that it's not, it's not going to be the same thing anymore. To me, it just like it's a, go from the bottom all the way up to the top and there's nothing discerning, nothing to capture eye, capture your eye in between, as opposed to what the windows do.
And once again, and I keep bringing this up, but that, that's not a very good rendering because the illumination will go all the way to the top. It's, it'll be much brighter than that.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
And the windows will show, will show up.
It won't be dark. Couple of those fog.
Well, I guess we should get approval from the FAA and then go from there.
Well, like I said, I, we can, I mean, that's what the staff will do. The next step for us is, we'll go to the FAA and
One thing, so my name is Julia with Schuler Shook. One thing that we will do is that we will go out there and conduct a mock-up that, you know, will set the lighting equipment in place, not the whole thing, but a portion of the building will be illuminated so you can see how far the lighting is going to go, okay? The other aspect that I wanted to mention is that, because I illuminated the Pomala Building and there's currently a beacon up there, okay? We went through quite the exercise with the FAA and they did sort of give us, you know, a hard time about it because it's a huge, you know, that's a fixture that has like 1.2 million candle powers, okay? That's not going to be the case in our case.
That's good.
But it, in the Pomala Building, you know, the minute we started angling that light, okay, like 45 degrees, they had an issue with it. So, we're going straight up, so they're, they're going to have to review it, okay? And, and we'll have to get approval. And, and they do care about the angle, the intensity and the color of light, okay? So, just wanted to add that up there.
Yeah, and what's nice is, and this is another thought process too, is, based on the FAA feedback, we can bring it back and tell you they won't allow this color and you still want to go forward with it. You know, we can bring back some of the feedback that we have.
Let's worry about what we want and then if it doesn't, if they won't approve it, that's a different story.
I mean, that's what the staff wants to get out of it, is we just want direction and then we'll do all the investigative work.
All right. I'd kind of like to take a look at the ring too. I'm curious about how that would look versus no ring with the
With the light going all the way up? Yeah.
The one thing about the ring, and Julia just sat down, but one of the things, because it would be individual lights, you do have the ability to make it move, so to speak, by having them alternate colors and stuff like that. Once again, like I said before, I think it makes sense for Julia to explain it because, yeah, it's just maintenance-wise what we're concerned about is just that, there's so many individual lights up there.
One thing that, you know, because of LED is constantly progressing, we just reviewed a product about two weeks ago. It is an LED flexible tube that changes color and you can control it within four to six inches and it's a direct view product, okay? So, I wanted to bring that up because I know when you and I talked about, you know, we were talking about segments of light and if one segment goes out, well, then you're out of luck, you'll have to replace it and it'd probably be a long time before you do and so it's going to look bad. But there's other technology out there that is a little bit more continuous, okay, and that we can control as well.
Can you make that move as well as that